This meeting is being webcast. I'll start again, actually, apologies, the webcast hadn't started. So welcome to the Cabinet Meeting, Surrey County Council. This meeting will be webcast for those that aren't on the call or in the meeting itself. And can I remind members, please, of the usual meeting etiquette? I'll leave my camera on at all times during the meeting. And if you could please turn your microphones on when you speak and turn them off when you have finished speaking. And if you're having broadband connection problems, then certainly feel free to turn your cameras off. It's the cabinet, that is, but equally you can leave them on if you prefer. There is a chat function and a raise hand function on this system. So if you would like to speak on any item, could you please raise your hand or put something in the chat? If, which has been known, I missed that for some reason. Perhaps somebody can just interrupt to remind me that you've asked to speak. Although it's recorded, it also will be minuteed and those minutes will be published in the usual way. This is, of course, a meeting in public rather than a public meeting. All their residents do have the opportunity to submit questions in advance. And we do, in fact, have some which we will deal with at the appropriate time in the agenda. Can I just introduce Joanna Killian, Chief Executive, who will be joining us on this call alongside Paul Evans, the Monitoring Officer, and Lee Whitehouse, the Finance Director, the Session 151 Officer. And there will be other officers, fellow directors and committee services with this as well. So I'll just start by doing a roll call for cabinet members. When I call out your name, could you just please turn on your camera and just introduce yourself and confirm that you are present? Starting with Mary Lewis.
Good afternoon, Mary Lewis, Cabinet Member for Children, Young People and Families Wellbeing.
Thank you, Mary. Julie Isles.
Good afternoon, Julie Isles, Cabinet Member for All Age Learning.
Sinead Mooney.
Thank you, Leader. Sinead Mooney, Cabinet Member for Adult Social Care, Public Health and Domestic Abuse.
Thank you. Matt Furness.
Hello, Matt Furness, Cabinet Member for Transport.
Mel Few.
Good afternoon, Cabinet Member for Resources.
Thank you. Natalie Brownhall.
Good afternoon, Cabinet Member for Environment and Climate Change.
Thank you. Zolli Grantoff.
Good afternoon, Cabinet Member for Corporate Support.
Alison Griffiths.
Good afternoon, Deputy Cabinet Member for Place.
Thank you. Marissa Heath.
Good afternoon, Deputy Cabinet Member for People Portfolio.
Thank you. Blackie Rush.
Hello, I'm the Deputy Cabinet Member for Finance Resources.
And Edward Hawkins.
Good afternoon, Edward Hawkins, Deputy Cabinet Member for Property.
Thank you. We have a policy for absence from Colin Kemp. And also, I'm sorry, Denise, did I miss you out? Apologies.
Good afternoon, Denise Tyler-Stewart, Cabinet Member for Communities.
Yes, very sorry, I jumped over you for some reason. Yes, just to confirm, apologies from Colin Kemp and also Mark Nutty, who's the Deputy Cabinet Member, will be joining us a little later on. The next item, then, the minutes of the previous meeting, which was held on the 27th of October 2020, unless anybody indicates the contrary, I assume that those are agreed. Can't see any objections, so thank you very much. Next item then is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations, any interest to declare? Can't see any, so thank you very much. Okay, and then just before we go into the formula agenda, I just wanted to start by make a few, just a few comments. You know, it's been an interesting week or so since our, certainly since our last cabinet meeting, with the progress that has been made in relation to the vaccines. I think that for all of us, gives us some hope and some light at the end of the tunnel. As of today, where it's not clear which tier we will be put into as Surrey County, as Surrey, and will only know that, I imagine, on Thursday, when that's formally announced. However, I think it is important for all of us to remind ourselves that the vaccine, or the proposed vaccine, is not a panacea in terms of the here and now. And as always, I would remind residents to just, you know, just to comply with the basic rules of washing your hands, keeping a safe distance, and where appropriate, using face coverings. I think if all, if all residents stick with those basic rules, then that's our best hope in keeping the spread of this virus as contained as we possibly can. Across Surrey, the numbers are starting to show a small decline of Covid positive residents, which is good news. There are, however, and there continue to be some spikes in different boroughs. So there is absolutely no reason for us to be complacent. The numbers are published on the website, so residents do have an opportunity to see that direction of travel. But we mustn't read too much into, into those numbers in terms of, you know, the, us being out of the, out of the woods here in any sense. I think it's very clear to all of us, just the enormous impact that Covid-19 has had, not just across the world, you know, or the country, but within the county. And later on in the agenda, we will just look at a Community Impact Assessment Report, which is a really good piece of work that highlights the disproportionate impact Covid has had on many of our existing vulnerable communities and individuals. And that in itself has helped us revise and review our priorities as an authority. Last year, we spent a lot of time with partner organisations and with residents looking at our 2030 vision, what is it that this county wanted to do? What were its ambitions? And its single main ambition was to ensure that no one was left behind. And that meant tackling inequality across the county, inequality of health and inequality of opportunity. And those are our guiding lights, those are the things that everything we do runs through, you know, those themes. And we built on those in the sense that we've now refined the four sort of priority areas that will help us deliver that ambition. And those four are to grow a sustainable economy so that everyone can benefit. You know, it is the single biggest issue, I think, for most residents now is around their job security or indeed if they've very sadly lost their job. And what, what can we do as an authority alongside all the other organisations to rebuild our economy and to get people that want to work back into work? You know, we are particularly exposed in terms of the aviation industry in the north and the south of this county. And we will work as hard as we possibly can to do what we can to provide that support and where appropriate, help people retrain. So the economy, standing back up the economy is a central, central theme to everything, actually, beyond that. The second main area for us is tackling health inequalities. I say that the Covid has really highlighted what we already knew, but has exacerbated those inequalities across the county. And that is something that we will do. We work hard with Surrey Hartlands Health System to address that wherever we possibly can. And particularly mental health. We had a very good, I think, and informative mental health summit last week with all of our key partners. Many people through this, through Covid, through isolation and just not being able to mix with friends and family, you know, are beginning to experience mental health issues. And we must do what we can to support those people. Certainly from deteriorating any further, but to access the services that will help. And there are, we have a mental health hub that can be accessed through our websites and so on. But we must do more and will do more. And then the last two, what the third one is to enable a greener, greener future. And we've got some items on this agenda, I think, which, which support that, that agenda. And it's hugely important that we hit our, our targets in terms of carbon emissions. That does necessitate not just action on the part of this authority, but also action from residents. The active travel schemes that we've been looking to implement across the county in areas, you know, which is to make it easier for people to walk into cycle, has to be said, have not always met with unanimous support. We did receive over 6 million of additional funding for the second tranche. But those schemes will only be rolled out where there is genuine, genuine desire by the local community to see them, to see them implemented. And just to point out, because I know this has been raised on a number of occasions, where there are these temporary schemes in place at the moment, they will only be made permanent if at all and following detailed consultation with residents. And that leads into the last one, which is about engaging more effectively and empowering our communities. You know, we want to make sure that we play our part in delivering what it is that the communities want. We can't overpromise and we won't overpromise, but we can engage and we could listen and we can discuss what, what initiatives there may be that will improve and support your communities. And starting with Your Fund Surrey, which we launched last week, which I think is a fantastic initiative for, for communities to bring forward schemes that are legacy schemes. This is not about just highways issues, which I know are always prevalent in people's minds, but about things in their community that will really make the experience that much, that much better. So I think on that note, we'll, we'll move on to the agenda. As it, it's a fairly lengthy agenda, so we'll move forward at a sensible pace. But we will take the next item now, which are members' questions. And there are four of those, starting with a question from Will Foster to Julie Isles. Will, was there a supplementary question you had?
Thank you, councillor Oliver. I'll put them together, if that's okay. Obviously, just thank the Cabinet Member for the answer on the first one. And the staff taking up this issue, pursuing the government's properly funded post-16 education, so I'm grateful for that. Regarding the second question, I am concerned about how long it is taking the council to decide what to do with the manor site and several other empty sites. This one's been empty since 2008. Will the cabinet agree to disclose the plans via Part Two?
Well, sorry, I couldn't hear that last bit of that question. I don't know about anybody else, could you just repeat that for us?
Sorry about that. So will the cabinet member agree to disclose what is being considered for the manor school site via Part Two?
Okay, thank you. Julie Isles.
I think councillor Forrest, it won't be very long at all until you have some further information about this site. So if we can just leave it there for today, I will get back to you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Will. And then the next two questions were from Jonathan Essex, the first to Natalie Brownhall. Jonathan.
Thank you. May I follow Will's lead and take them two together and thank Natalie for her, for her response and say no further question, no further question on that one? And just move straight to the last one, which was the question and the answer was from Cabinet Member Matt Furness. I'd like to thank him for his answer and, and note that, you know, I appreciate it is difficult to provide full disability access for electric vehicles. I think there are problems with that going forwards, but I'm glad that he's confirmed that that, that won't be a problem in our case. But just the question is noting, I think that we're looking at something like 60 or 80 of the buses and 50 minibus, whereas there's a total fleet of around 800. What's, what's the level of ambition for us to have a completely zero carbon bus fleet in Surrey? Like, by what date are you aiming for? Thank you, Leader. Thank you, councillor Essex. Yes, as you can see, we have in the papers this afternoon, a massive investment, probably one of the largest across a county and the whole of the UK into low emission buses. It's actually between 70 and 80 ultra-low or zero emission buses. And this will allow a cascading effect of the less polluting models of Euro six and Euro five emission rating. And we'll continue to work with operators. As you know, it's about 46% of all carbon emissions in Surrey come from transport. So the more that we can do to remove the higher polluting ones from our roads, the more that we can start hitting our vision of 2050 for when we become a carbon neutral across the county. And I think actually, 11% of the existing buses being replaced in our first initiative is quite something to be celebrating about rather than anything else. So is our ambition, we have, are working with our partners, we have set these climate change declaration targets, and we will be meeting them. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, Matt. Jonathan, are you happy with that?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much. And then we have two questions from the public, and the first from Sally Blake. I don't think there's a, I don't think Sally's with us, so there's no supplementary. No, I think that's right. And then the second is from councillor Paul Kennedy. Paul.
Thank you, councillor Oliver, for your very helpful explanation of both the methodology, including the meaning of specimen date, and the purpose of the council's daily updates, which is to provide a robust week-on-week comparison to illustrate the evolution of local infections over time. And for that purpose, I do accept that a five-day delay is appropriate. My worry and my supplementary question relate to the public presentation of this as a daily update, which I'm afraid is still leading to misunderstandings on social media, in emails and so on. People do still assume, I'm afraid, it's just a cumulative Surrey equivalent of the daily updates provided by the UK government. And it continues to be used primarily as a sort of borough and district league table. I can see that the report itself provides much more explanation than it used to even a few days ago, which is helpful. And I'm not expecting an immediate response from you, but can you please think about the overall presentation to the public, including the name 'daily update'?
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, no, that's a good point. And I think will be particularly relevant as we move into a new tiered structure. You know, I don't know which tier Surrey will be in, but I'm pretty sure that everybody will want to know if we are not in tier one, you know, what, what, what we need to do and, you know, to move into tier one if we were into tier two, for example. So I think, I think there will be a lot of interest in, in the accuracy of these, these numbers. So I'll take that back to the Director of Public Health, Ruth Hutchinson, and to the comms team, and let's see what we can do to make it absolutely clear to residents kind of what, what that data is telling them. Thank you for that. Okay, thank you. Well, that's the end of the questions. We'll move on to item 4C, there are no petitions. For D, there were no representations received on reports to be considered in private. There were no reports from select committees. So item six, then, there were two decisions to report. The first was by Mel Few, the Cabinet Member for Finance. Mel, was there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just like to update the cabinet to advise that there are 111 properties which need to be transferred from various ownerships following our decision to change the relationship with Surrey Wildlife Trust. And so far, 23 have been completed and 70 will be completed by year end. And it leaves us with eight to go. And those have some particular individual complexes which we'll resolve as we move forward. Otherwise, there's nothing else.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mel. And the second decision was mine, which related to the creation of a new school by the amalgamation of Christchurch, a Church of England Infant School and Englefield Green Infant School. I've nothing further to add to that. Okay, so item seven then is our monthly updates. We have an update in rotation from cabinet members. And today it is Julie Isles's turn. Julie is the Cabinet Member for All Age Learning. So over to Julie, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Leader. I'm delighted to provide an update to Cabinet. Although my last was as recently as May, this has been a very clearly busy, challenging time across all aspects of our education services and our support for learners of all ages. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank not only our dedicated team of officers within and across all of our directorate, but also the leadership teams, teachers and support staff at all of our schools and colleges. The work has been relentless, and I think it's really important that we recognise just how much they have all gone over and above in their efforts to make sure that children and young people in our county have been supported through this response to the Covid-19 situation. Members will have read the report, but for those listening in, I thought I'd just pull out the highlights. We start with the cattle investment to deliver specialist places for our special education needs and disabilities pupils, and that is progressing well. The remaining 108 places in Phase One will be delivered from September 2021. And the second phase approved by Cabinet in September of this year will create a further 213 additional places across Surrey's special needs estate in the academic year from September 2021. This speaks to our 2030 vision of no one left behind. And our young people with special education needs and disabilities can be educated in the most appropriate setting, closer to home, more engaged in their communities, and with reduced travel times, which also furthers our future green agenda. If I turn to attendance at school, it has been largely in line with the previous year, and that compares well with national data. The majority of schools have remained open throughout, although there has been an occasional need to respond to public health advice to isolate bubbles within schools. As you might expect, the position changes daily, and schools are supported by our health protection teams and Surrey County Council offices in education and public health. Our local resilience forum are working on arrangements to pilot lateral flood testing, and we've put teaching staff high on the priority list for access. I'll also take this opportunity to say that we're examining the detail of the recently announced winter funding package. And we're working with school leaders to make sure that children and the relevant families are supported in the most effective way so that they do not go without food or indeed heat in the holidays. Colleagues will see that work is underway to complete the urgent remedial works required to bring our pupil referral units up to standard. And we have just recently closed a consultation which will feed into the planning for the next phase and the wider co-production of our model for the alternative provision. Currently, our per pupil cost exceeds the Department of Education estimates, and we need a step change to achieve the best possible outcomes for young people who access alternative provision. We're not just taking input from each of the phase leads, we're actively engaging with children and young people through our user voice participation networks. As with our special needs pupils, wherever possible, we want local in-school solutions so that learners can remain in mainstream settings, closer to home, with minimal disruption to their education. My update provides further information about the Learner SPAR, that's the Learner Single Point of Access, which was launched in July. And I'm sure we all welcome this simplified and more timely approach to support families and professionals when there is a concern about the development or the learning needs of the child. The split seems to be two thirds of calls coming from parents and carers and the other third from education settings and professionals. Most calls are resolved in our first point of contact, but because the staffing is by multidisciplinary teams, complex queries can be more easily and quickly supported and addressed. With all requests for education healthcare plans now being reviewed through the Learner SPAR, we can track and monitor, which will give us better analysis of trends and themes by age group, by primary need, by geography and/or by school. Our adult learning teams have continued to provide family and supportive learning alongside outreach to disadvantaged residents and those with mild or moderate mental health disabilities since the start of lockdown. There's been a blended learning programme with a mix of online and face-to-face learning, and we're ensuring delivering this autumn within the Covid safety guidelines. I've included some information about our apprenticeships programme because our adult and community education provision will continue to develop the availability of apprenticeships and training courses. And we'll be working with the Economic Recovery Group to look at provision which will address the skills gap and enable those who've recently lost their jobs to study for qualifications which will increase their employability. So thank you for the opportunity to update you on this work across this portfolio, Leader.
And thank you very much, Julie, for all of your hard work and the officers in moving all of these things forward. Mary Lewis.
Thank you, Leader. And I just wanted to elaborate a little bit about the launch of the Learner's Single Point of Access from the point of view of families. Julie Isles and I meet regularly with representatives of Family Voice, who are official family partner. And they've told us over a number of years how difficult it is for families to know how to get help, particularly with complex problems that cross service boundaries. And I note that in the first three months of the nearly 3,000 calls that were taken by the Learner SPAR, Single Point of Access, 65% of these were from parents, which indicates just how, how much they, they needed and would use such a service. So it made me think back to last December, when Benedict Simcox, the Chair of Family Voice, joined the scrutiny committee members on a trip to the Children's Single Point of Access in Guildford, as it was at the time. And her one question to the scrutiny committee was, when can we send parents have one of these single points of access? So she was told then that plans were in place and it was described, but seeing is believing. And since that time, since last December, so in a year, a new location has been set up where the Children's Single Point of Access for Social Care and the Learner's Single Point of Access can be co-located. The Learner SPAR had its soft opening in the summer and then went from full pelt from September. So I think it's just a fantastic indication of where we're delivering on our promises to families. And it's, this sort of thing is so vital in raising the credibility of the council as a provider of really high quality care for children, young people and families. And it is a really important example of what we can do when we work across different parts of the organisation. So I just want to thank all the officers involved, both from the children's social care side in the C-Spar and on the education side, Julie's side of matters in the L-Spar. And it's going to be a really good support to families. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Completely agree, Mary. Thank you very much. Denise, ten to you.
Thank you, Leader. I also wanted to commend Julie and all of the education officers on the sheer brevity of this report. I mean, this just really is testament to not just the long-held commitments that we have to creating more send places and the pupil referral unit capital investment to bring our establishments up to standard, but it's just the business as usual, keeping our schools open, the learning support, providing that outreach to disadvantaged people. And actually, the mental health support that can be given through our adult learning and stimulation out in our communities, that all of this has been maintained throughout such a challenging period. And Julie, you used the term relentless, and I've heard that mentioned before on the, on the, on how it's been for you and your team. And I just think you really need to take credit. And actually, the apprentice scheme as well for the fire and rescue service, a really great entry point for our young people into one of our very popular public facing services. So I think you deserve huge thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Denise. Okay, I can't see any other hands up. So thank you very much for that, Julie. That's really, really encouraging. So we'll move on to the next item, which, item eight, which is the delegated and urgent decisions. There was only one, and that There was only one and that related to the second tranche of the Infection Control Fund, that the cheque is in the post apparently from the government, but it's 15.8 million, of which 9.8 million will go to care homes, 2.8 will go to community care providers, and then 3.2 will be used on a discretionary basis for daycare providers and some support to housing organisations and so on. And so the full detail of that is set out in the report and the recommendation is that Cabinet notes the decision taken by officers, which I assume is agreed unless I see to the contrary. Item nine then is we've reinstated the COVID-19 update. It's very brief. Quite honestly, by the time most of these reports on COVID are released, the rules have changed and they will do again on Thursday. I think though, there are a couple of bits I'd just like to flag up, particularly in relation to test and trace programmes. So as from the 26th of November, we will be supplementing the National Test and Trace Programme with our own local tests and trace, run through our customer services team with public health staff. Just standing that up has not been an insignificant task, but that's now ready to go, which is good news. Then the COVID Champions Initiative is being implemented. There's been good communication and engagement with the district and boroughs around their part in all of this, you know, and particularly the monitoring of numbers and the rollout of increased communications to residents where those numbers are rising and also the Marshall schemes and so on. So I think that, you know, we are as well prepared as we can be. There was in the first lockdown period, between nearly 40,000 vulnerable residents were identified. That number now, the definition of a vulnerable resident has been changed and they're now described as clinically extremely vulnerable. And of those, there are about three and a half thousand, about 10% or so. And those will be receiving, are receiving outbound calls to make sure that any requirements, any needs that they have are being supported. And then the last point just to note is that the government announced 170 million of funding, winter funding, which our share is a couple of million or so. That money will be used in part to support free school meals during the Christmas holidays. And that will be rolled out again with the support of the district and boroughs and schools and where appropriate, local food banks. So there are four recommendations on that report, which I won't read out. They're all self-even straight ones to say, I think we'll have a completely new set of rules probably in the coming days anyhow. But at least that gives a summary of what we've been doing to, you know, to support residents through COVID. So I assume those are agreed. So and then moving on. So thank you, Julie. Then we're now onto the first other substantive item, which is the draft budget for 2122 and also then the revised medium-term financial strategy at a time when there is so much uncertainty that it is very difficult to project or predict what that future might look like. But Mel Few is going to try and do exactly that. Thank you, Mel.
Thank you, Leader. I'm pleased to present the draft budget, which I believe at the moment is realistic, deliverable and continues the significant progress in stabilising the county's financial position, which has been achieved through the transformation work started three long years ago. When the final settlement is announced by the government between now and Christmas, the draft budget will be adjusted to reflect that settlement. Apart from adult social care, where those authorities, which responsibility for providing care to the elderly, might be required by government to raise an additional precept cover, to cover, precept to cover the growing demand, it is not anticipated that any individual services will be impacted by the funding announcement. Before going into the details of the budget pack, I would like to make the following points. This draft follows months of hard work, which has steadily reduced the gap which started at some 64 million pounds and now is at its current level of 18.3 million. Work to close the gap still remains to be completed before it is presented to full council in February 2021. This paper not only contains the detailed service budgets and their respective pressures, but also the refreshed organisation strategy, which now addresses the change in strategic context in which the council finds itself operating due to the impact on its way of working brought about through the COVID-19 pandemic. The refreshed organisation strategy does not change, but reconfirms the vision 2030 and is now aligned to four priority objectives. Growing the sustainable economy, tackling health inequality, enabling a greener future and empowering communities. The Cabinet will also find the paper outlines a summary of the refreshed transformation programme, which has been aligned to the four priority objectives. As for the past two years, this budget has been set on three main principles. No use of reserves to balance the budget. Realistic detailed efficiency measures identified by service. Each service having its own budget envelope and is expected to deliver the services to the frontline while remaining within those limits. That said, it should be recognised that continuing challenges exist going forward in meeting the ever-rising demand of both adults and children's services. And of course, we must also be aware of the yet unknown impact of round two of COVID and its potential, which could have negative effects on the council finances through the year 2021. Despite the impact of COVID-19 this year, I believe the county finances are in significantly better position than two years ago. And we are in the fortunate position of having been able to increase our reserves and will most likely at the end of this financial year, with another downturn balanced without using any reserves, be in a position to further increase those reserve balances. Turning to the details of the budget, firstly, I will deal with the revenue. For 2021, the proposed revenue budget has been set at 971.6 million and is based on the following assumptions. A council tax rise of 1.99%, which is expected to yield in the region of about 780 million. We estimate that business rates will remain stable with no major changes. Invisition has been set at 116.4 million per the current year. Although the current year's collection fund incorporating both business rates and council tax from the boroughs is currently in line with expectations, there is growing realisation that the boroughs will not be able to collect the full amounts due to the council this year. Current estimates for the shortfall after the first half of the year is 32 million pounds for council tax and 5 million pounds for business rates, a total of 37 million pounds. The government have acknowledged this problem and will promulgate the county authorities must or amortise the shortfall of collections from boroughs and districts over three years. Accordingly, an amount of 10.8 million in respect to the council tax and 1.7 million for business rates in the budget has been included. Government grants projected at 93.4, we see no major changes in that area. As I said before, no adult social care precept of equivalent to 2% in prior years is foreseen for the budget year. The details of the main element of funding are set out in Table 3 in paragraphs 5.23 of the paper. On the national and local funding context, sorry, the national and local funding context is outlined in paragraphs 5.12 through to 5.43, where the main point to note is that the promised comprehensive spending review by the government is of today not, has not materialised, despite the numerous indications that it would be imminently available, which then leaves the county and local authorities to rely on an annual settlement. Expenditure. The budgeted service envelopes are set out in Table 2 and total 989.3 million, as I said, leaving, as I said earlier, leaving a gap of 18.3 million. There is still work to go and I'm going to identify the efficiencies on the following services. With adult social care, the gap is 5 million at this point. Children's, families and lifelong learning and culture is 5.9 million and environment and transport and infrastructure, 5.9 million. I'm confident that with a little bit more hard work and sharper pencils, these gaps could be closed. The individual service strategies and narratives are detailed in paragraphs 4 through to 4.45. Cabinet should also note the comment in paragraph 5.44, where the emerging SIFR Financial Management Code of Practice paper will become effective in the new budget year. The final version of this budget report will set out the council's finding in detail and also detail any actions required to ensure compliance with this new code of practice. If I turn to the capital expenditure budget from paragraph 6.1 in the papers, this is the most exciting element of the budget, being the highest and most defined capital budget that I've seen in the last three years. Over the next five years, the proposed capital spend of 1.7 billion has been established in line with the county's top four priorities. For example, ensuring our school facilities are kept to high standards, investing in tackling climate change, including flood alleviation schemes throughout the county, looking after adults in our care throughout through major programming provision of extra care homes, with the most innovative item being the introduction of Your Fund Surrey, a five-year capital fund whose objective is empowering communities to fund place-making or place improvements within their communities. The programme is currently being advertised to residents and will be officially launched in February 2021. A summary of the capital programme over the five years is set out in Table 4, with the annual budget for 2021 set at 199 million and the top 10 projects for next year are set out in paragraph 6.20. As is normal practice, the budget contains the medium-term financial outlook for 2025 to 2026. The current uncertainty with regards to funding of local authorities remains one of the biggest items to be resolved going forward. The service budgets have been assessed as to likely demand and inflation pressures, balanced against the revenue projectors and efficiencies driven through further transformation programmes. The results of these projections are set out in Tables 8 and 9 and reflect the budget gaps likely to occur going forward, which provisionally total 170 million pounds over the period. The next steps in this budget setting process are for the scrutiny committees to review the individual budgets with any recommendations being made to Cabinet by mid-December. Once these comments have been addressed and the financial settlement received from government built into the budget, it will be presented for adoption by full council at its annual budget meeting in February 21. In closing, I would like to express my sincere thanks to all the officers, but especially our diligent and determined finance team for all the hours of work that have gone into bringing the budget to this stage. There are three recommendations for the Cabinet. One is to note the budget, the draft budget and the medium-term financial outlook. Two, to note the provisional budget gap of 18.3 million, which will be reduced to zero in due course. And to note the proposed capital budget programme for 2025, 2026 of 1.7 billion. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much Mel and thank you to you and to Becky, I think she's going to say a few words now for all of your hard work in getting us to this point. Becky, do you want to?
Thank you. Yes. Mel, this is a very positive step towards delivering a balanced budget for the financial year 2122. And it is the accumulation of a lot of hard work, both by the finance community and the service directorates. Of course, this draft budget is built on what is now a stable and robust financial position for the current financial year. As we heard at Cabinet earlier in the year, as the Finance Improvement Programme was closed, the financial position of Surrey County Council has transformed, thanks to solid leadership from yourself as Cabinet member and from Lee Whitehouse and his award-winning finance team, robust financial processes and by embedding finance into the decision-making processes within the services. Finance is an enabler of the County Council. Good financial management enables good financial decisions to be made, which in turn provides better services for our residents. Many residents will have seen the Your Fund Surrey Community Project Scheme launched last week, that Mel and the Leader also mentioned today. This is the extremely exciting 100 million fund for legacy projects within our communities and part of an overall 1.7 billion capital programme over the next five years. This capital programme is another example of Surrey County Council's robust financial position, acting as an enabler for the council to further invest in its infrastructure and assets used to deliver services to residents. Capital investment is critical for the County Council. It enables us to enhance and improve our infrastructure and assets and also enables us to transform the way we deliver services, better outcomes for residents, reducing future revenue pressures and helping us find money for frontline services. Last year, Surrey County Council benchmarked the associated cost of borrowing for capital programmes against other authorities. Surrey County Council ratio of current financing cost net revenue budget is low at 2.6% and forecast to remain low at 6.5% despite the 1.4 billion approved plan spend. Similar authorities have a ratio of 6.5%. The capital spend is considered prudent and falls within our current borrowing limits. This exciting and ambitious five-year programme brings us more in line and enables the council to drive forward its four priority areas. Thank you, Mel and Lee, for your financial leadership and thank you to all of finance and the directorates for getting the draft budget in such good shape.
Thank you, thank you Becky. And it's a testament to the hard work and the difficult decisions that have been taken over the last two or three years, you know, that we are able to say that the council is in good financial, financial shape. And, you know, there are many projects now where we are able to invest for the future. And then we shouldn't, we shouldn't take it for granted that balancing the budget is, you know, is a given. You know, local government has absolutely stepped up to the plate during COVID and, you know, we have had to manage the normal, the business as usual services as well as responding to the pandemic. And to do that and to retain our sort of financial robustness is, you know, is impressive. I wish that the government, you know, and I've said this every time I've commented on budgets, local government, I wish the government could give us longer-term security. If we, if we had a three-year projection in terms of what our funding would look like, that would enable us to take some longer-term decisions. But sadly, that isn't the case. We nearly got there this year, but at the last minute, the government had decided to do a one-year spending review and I suspect that's probably how it will remain. But anyway, I think in the context of that uncertainty, this is a very good, I think, budget. You know, we'll go through the scrutiny process and all members will have an opportunity to comment. And then once we have the settlement just before Christmas, we can then present this to council in February. But I think there's, I think it reassures, I hope it reassures residents that we are using their money wisely and that, you know, wherever possible, we're maintaining and enhancing the services that they access and benefit from. So thank you, Mel, Lee and Becky and Rachel Nana in particular for this report and for getting our finances into a good shape. As Mel says, there are three recommendations. I won't reread those. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next item then is to do with ultra-low and zero emission buses. Over to you, Matt.
Thank you, Leader. So this item here today is about a significant investment into ultra-low or zero emission buses as well as community transport vehicles. We are very much wanting to accelerate the introduction of ultra-low and zero emission vehicles in Surrey and to do so, And to do so, we are establishing a zero emission, ultra-low emission scheme backed by the county council to generate support funding for the industry investment. This very much supports our ambitions for a greener future, Surrey twenty thirty vision and our climate change strategy and is part of a council's response to the declared climate emergency and our three hundred million pound investment into greener futures. By providing these sustainable transport options, we will contribute to a reduction in harmful emissions and towards zero net, net zero carbon. As mentioned before, forty-six percent of all our carbon emissions are transport-related in Surrey. So by establishing this scheme, we will accelerate the introduction of ultra-low zero emission buses and mini-buses into Surrey. But also this project and this investment does encompass bus priority measures and pinch points on the highway as well as real-time information for passengers to aid knowledge and travel decision-making and also complementary investment by the bus operators and community transport providers. So the proposed financial support from the council is an introduction investment of about seventy to eighty ultra-low or zero emission buses and an additional fifty community transport mini-buses over the next five years. As I mentioned before with the question, we do believe this is the first occasion that such a scheme of such magnitude will be introduced in one area of the UK. And we have been working closely with all of our partners on this and they are extremely excited about the opportunity to deliver such a large-scale change. So the companies and organizations which receive the new buses will be able to cascade the less polluting diesel bus models. These are the Euro five and six emission rating ones. They're the latest ones, replaced by the scheme onto other routes around the county. And this means that we can get the more polluting, lower Euro engine ratings, three and four, off the roads of Surrey. It will depend, of course, on which bids and where in the county. But I'm pleased to say that we will be prioritizing areas with declared air quality management areas to get the funding. The technology that we're likely to include will be hydrogen, full electric or extended range battery-driven electric buses, micro-hybrid extended range electric buses and electric motor that powers buses at all times with GPS geo-fencing, which shuts the diesel engines down when it enters AQMA's. So the bus element of this scheme is thirty-two point three million of capital funding and this will accelerate the introduction of the buses starting in the next twelve months. There will be an additional nine million pounds, which will go into bus priority measures. And this will be targeted at the pinch points identified by both the council and the bus operators, which form part of this scheme. This is very much a complementary investment, which will allow the buses to operate more efficiently and run to the published timetable, ensuring that the council can secure the most effective use of these new buses. We will also be prioritizing and updating our priority studies for the buses, an example of which will be the Red Hill Righate Bus Priority Study, which has already been commissioned. This is considering opportunities on the A twenty-three between Red Hill and Hawley, including bus lanes, intelligent bus priority traffic signals, and is also being developed to improve the traffic flow at the A twenty-three Three Arch Road Junction near the East Surrey Hospital. We'll also be putting in one point four million alongside a hundred thousand pounds of revenue funding for the real-time passenger information systems. This makes journeys more sustainable and supports resilience and better connected communities, allowing people to access on-street information displays and data as it's happening. And then not to mention how sort of the community transport element, this is a very important area. We are already doing and put a bid into the Demand Responsive Transport Service to the DFT about getting more rural areas involved. It's not a one-size-fits-all for all transport. And by actually extending this into the community transport sector and providing fifty new ultra-low or zero emission vehicles across Surrey, we're able to support our residents who cannot access the mainstream public transports of buses and trains to access many of the key services such as healthcare. So it is all very much connected together. We put an expression of interest into the DFT for just over half a million pounds. And should this be successful, we will be able to get a more comprehensive for-vehicle operation to be provided across Surrey. So leader, this is extremely exciting. We've got our partners very much on board here and ready to deliver. And it is at all levels of bus operator, right down to the community as well as our key large playing operators across Surrey. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Matt. I've got two speakers. I also have a note, Mike Goodman, that you would like to speak. Is that right?
Yes, please, leader.
Yeah, so as, I know you are a huge supporter of this when you were in the cabinet. So do you want to go first?
Yes, please. Thank you. It is just over a year ago since Surrey County Council were the first county council to announce their intention of moving all buses operating in Surrey to ultra-low emissions by twenty thirty as part of their overall strategy of net zero by twenty fifty. At the time, this was a bold and exciting announcement. And today I would like to congratulate Matt Furness and the officer team who have developed this initiative over the last year. And today's paper is a significant step forward in delivering actions to deliver this strategy. Now, at a time when finances are tight, together with the effect of Covid, this council is prioritizing and proposing making a fund of forty-nine million available, of which thirty-nine million will be to support grants for buses and three point six million, as Matt said, for community transport, to enable them to purchase electric hydrogen buses and other ultra-low emission buses. This is exciting and forward-thinking project and demonstrates that Surrey are without doubt leading the way in tackling climate change with this projected project, reducing emissions and improving air quality. The paper says one of the priorities will be those areas with poor quality, which is great news for those residents affected, and I welcome this. Interestingly, the paper before cabinet today comes just one week after the government's announcement of a ten-point green industrial revolution plan. The plan includes some particularly ambitious commitments such as twenty thirty phase-out dates for the sale of diesel and petrol cars and a set of clarity directory across a range of key sectors for net zero, including offshore wind, nuclear power and hydrogen. The package in total will be twenty million of investment. The government plan will create jobs. I hope Surrey will be at the front of these new job opportunities in the green economy. The drive to support hydrogen buses will be great news for our rural areas where electric batteries may not have the range. Now, green hydrogen plants are being developed in the southeast. With hydrogen being an important element of Surrey's transport, we are well-placed to work with the industry in Surrey and potentially create jobs. This project today is an important step forward and demonstrates that Surrey are leading the way in tackling climate change. The commitment of this cabinet is clear and, in my opinion, is unrivaled by any other council. This is a great opportunity for bus companies and community groups to work with Surrey County Council in increasing the fleet of low, ultra-low emission vehicles in Surrey and at the same time, improve the quality of the air residents breathe. Leader, this is an excellent and forward-thinking project and I fully support it and I thank Matt for bringing it to cabinet. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Okay, we have some more speakers. So Natalie Bramble.
Thank you, leader. Councillor Goodman has, has said some of the things I was going to say, so I'll cut my, my speech down slightly. I too am really pleased to support this paper from, from councillor Furness. As we know, Surrey's roads carry twice as much traffic than the average for the southeast. And it's vital at Surrey that we increase the usage of public transport and at the same time reduce our transport emissions so we can meet our goal of being net zero by twenty fifty. The environmental outcomes of moving from older diesel vehicles to ultra-low or zero emission vehicles will help considerably in improving our local air quality. And hydrogen buses coming to Righate and Red Hill is incredibly exciting and a massive step forward for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Sinead.
Thank you, leader. I'm really happy to support this paper. It is very clear that there is so much work going on to accelerate the introduction of ultra-low and zero emission vehicles into Surrey. As a divisional member for Staines in Spelthorn, I am so pleased to note that Transport for London has announced a new contract for the two ninety. For those of you that don't know, the two ninety goes from Twickenham to Staines. And TFL will be using seven new electric single-deck buses. While this isn't a Surrey County Council scheme, it certainly does contribute to us delivering our ambitions. Matt, I'd like to ask you if you agree that developing innovative integrated transport delivery options with our partners is critical to the success of our schemes? And what focus is being placed on developing those strong links? Thank you.
Thank you, Sinead. Matt, do you want to hold off answering that until we do the next two speakers and then pick it up at the same time, if that's okay? Denise, tell us to it.
Thank you, leader. I would just like to commend the holistic approach that's been taken with this paper. I mean, it's absolutely looking at all the solutions needed to incentivize more of our residents and visitors to use our public transport, particularly real-time information and the prioritization through pinch points, which we all know is a frustration for people that sometimes use public transport. But particularly representing an area which has always had exceedances and has always been an air quality management area, as the whole borough of Spelthorn is, to have this commitment and prioritization around the funding to these areas is the first sort of tangible and deliverable mechanism to actually start to bring the, the emissions and the pollution levels down. So it's fantastic to see, as I say, the range of, of, of actions and mitigations within this report to improve our air quality and to improve our public transport. So thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Mary Lewis.
Thank you, leader. As colleagues will know, it doesn't take much to get me excited about buses and community transport. But this is no little thing because we're talking about fifty community transport vehicles over the next five years. We're talking about lots of buses as well contributing to the green agenda. And the reason for my excitement is that as the co-founder with my residents and as deputy chairman of the Cobham Chatterbus, we can see all the opportunities for alleviating transport poverty that come from having good community services running on local routes that people really want to use. At the moment, of course, the pandemic is, is stalling things in the development of public transport and bus networks. But the pandemic has changed behavior in ways that I think will be positive for our community transport and local buses in the future. People are tending to shop locally, they're tending to use leisure facilities locally, to walk locally and, you know, go for a walk, maybe starting with the bus and going somewhere pleasant. And I think if we can enable more and more of our residents to have access to all these things that car users have traditionally taken for granted, as well as reducing the usage of cars amongst car owners, we will be really pushing forward a greener Surrey and delivering on our No One Left Behind agenda. I've seen for myself how real-time passenger information can make a big difference to usage of, of buses. And so I'd put in a quick word with the cabinet member now for an extra bit of real-time passenger information on the other side of my high street, please. I think this is a thoroughly good report and I'm really pleased to, to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary. Matt, back to you.
Thank you, leader. Yes, no, thank you everyone for your support. We do work very closely with all of our partners. The bus operators were very quick to thank us, particularly during the pandemic because we, we said from day one that we would continue our payments. We've been working very closely with them to deliver as many of the services as we possibly can. And even just here on this paper and our bids to the DFT, they do support us quite heavily in getting the, these funding streams together. So just on, on Sinead, just on, on your point, we are working closely with the operators. The partnerships are absolutely key. And if you, if you look at point eight on page one hundred and seven, there is a line in there, which is, is, is just in the paragraph. It's a, the project will also support the enhanced working with the bus industry through quality bus partnerships. And this, this enables the operators, not only through bidding for the funding, but it also says what they're going to put back in as well. So it's not just a one-size funding. The operators have made it very clear that our support now means that they are able to support us back with accelerating more buses and more investment into the network in the future as things hopefully start returning to a bit of normality over the coming years. So leader, I, I think this is really exciting. Councillor Goodman started things off with the world, the UK's first electric park-and-ride. And let's hope we can make the rest of Surrey fully electric or hydrogen going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, and absolutely. I mean, Mike, I know, was, was, was a keen advocate of this and pushed it forward during his time in the cabinet and you've taken it on to the next stage. This is, is a really good next step. I mean, I think it's absolutely essential that we build and facilitate a good public transport infrastructure. You know, if we're ever going to get anywhere near to hitting our targets, we do need to attack that forty-six percent of carbon emissions from transport. And, you know, if we've got, only when we've got a kind of reliable transport system with real-time data, will people be confident to use it to go to the train station or wherever it is that they want to go to. So this is a really good step forward. There are two recommendations. The first is to support the establishment of the scheme. And the second is to leave the detail of the implementation to the cabinet member and executive directors. Can I assume that is agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then to item twelve, which is just introducing really the Community Impact Assessment Report that I touched on at the beginning. This is a set of reports, both across the county and broken down by district and borough that explore the kind of the health, the social and the economic impacts of Covid. And is intended to be used to provide targeted support to the communities that, that need it. You know, to, to enable us to act, to prevent or to mitigate some of those future impacts and to understand the experience of residents so that we can improve how we deliver our services wherever possible. That, that, that has, that, that, that this piece of work has already fed into the four priorities that both I and Mel have, have talked about around the economy, greener future, health inequalities in our communities. So it's been really helpful in that sense. The report that we've had from Surrey University on the general state of the economy in Surrey also feeds into that. So I think we've got some really good quality data now where we can start to look at how we can support those, those parts of our community where it's had a disproportionate impact. And we know that, 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 you know, residents from a BAMA background, those that have experienced very sadly domestic abuse, those with mental health conditions and those actually people living in residential care have been disproportionately affected. And we need to, we need to do something about that. So the four key priority areas, I, I believe, do pick up those issues and will start to address it, just not just us, but also with our partners. So I, I would encourage you to familiarize yourself with the report and the findings. And I know that we're, the officers are spending time with our district and borough colleagues and other partners to make sure that they're, you know, fully cognizant with, with, with what those, that report says. And that would help us build a collective response. I'm not going to go into any more detail at this stage unless anybody has any questions. But it's a piece of work that, you know, will, will, we will keep updated. I mean, this isn't just a one-off report. This is, this is something that we will use continually, go out and test in our communities what, what is happening. There is one error on paragraph seven of the report where it talks about the, the partner organizations that we have worked with. And towards the end of that paragraph, it talks about Surrey voluntary action. In fact, that of course should be Surrey community action. So we apologize to Jason and his team for that slight inaccuracy. Other than that, there are three recommendations. That is to note the five. there are three recommendations, that is to note the findings. It's to consider how the findings of the report can be incorporated into the council's planning. And I think we have already started to do that. And it highlights areas that we need to look at in the future and areas for future research. So I will take it that those three recommendations are agreed unless I see any hands to the contrary.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item 13 then is a report on the transformation of accommodation-based care and delivering independent living options. Sinead Mooney.
Thank you, Leader. I feel very strongly that this paper is great news for Surrey County Council and even better news for our working age adults with vulnerabilities. I'm so pleased to be announcing our launch of the delivery of 500 independent living schemes for our most vulnerable residents. Much progress has been made through a combination of external partnerships, best use of our void properties and other initiatives as set out on page 168 of this paper. But this paper is really about identifying sites in Surrey's ownership to create independent living schemes, ensuring that our working age vulnerable residents have choices, independence, a home for life and become an active and integral part of where they live. In essence, this paper is a great example of our commitment to empowering communities. For too long, some may say, this council has spoken in lofty terms about the need to build more housing. But this paper is all about delivery and is in the next steps towards fulfilling our ambitious accommodation with care and support strategy with a renewed focus on independent living as a way of empowering and enabling adults with learning disabilities or autism to live fulfilling and independent lives and removing the barriers and ways of old that have so often prevented this. The contents of this paper is something we should all be very proud of. In the summer in 2019, I met a young woman with a learning disability who wanted to show me her new home. It was a one-bedroom independent living scheme. I cannot tell you how excited she was when she took me to her home and how the pride she had when she showed me her brand-new tabletop dishwasher. As she showed me how to load the dishwasher and switch it on, at the same time, she spoke me through the process she followed to pay her rent. And I was really struck by the tangible happiness that she exuded and that came from being able to make the decisions necessary for her to live her best life. And I want all people who need our services and support to have the freedom that this young woman enjoys. So with this in mind, I very much welcome my cabinet colleague's support for this report as per the recommendations set out on pages 165 and 166 of the agenda pack. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sinead. Alison Griffiths.
And thank you, Sinead, for a very touching introduction. I very much welcome this paper and I would like to thank you, councillor Mooney, and all of the officers who've worked so hard on this proposal. As referenced in this paper, evidence suggests individuals living independently with support have better experiences and outcomes than those living in residential care. Our residents will have an increased choice with accommodation options available to meet their care needs and related to their disability, enabling our more vulnerable residents to make the right decisions for themselves. This accommodation will be placed at the heart of our communities where possible, helping to reduce social isolation and loneliness through social in collusion opportunities. Workplace opportunities and much more, ensuring residents' health and wellbeing is greatly improved through such schemes. This programme will truly transform our residents with learning disabilities and autisms lives, providing service users real options, real choices and real support, enabling this cohort of residents to reach their full potential. Everyone deserves to be empowered to make decisions regarding their own lives and how we choose to live it. I'm so thankful that this opportunity will provide just that for many of our residents in Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alison. Mary Lewis.
Thank you very much, Leader. Like Alison Griffiths, I was very touched by Sinead's introduction, her story. And that's because I had the opposite kind of visit a few years ago when I first became a member to a learning disabilities facility in my division. And it was very much in the old style. I don't mean it was a long-stay hospital, I haven't been a member that long, but we hadn't moved far forward. Very small bedrooms were the only personal space that the people, the adults living in this residential care home had. And they didn't have their own bathrooms and they were expected to live quite an institutional life. And I think the dignity that comes from providing a more independent style of accommodation, as is proposed in this report, can't be underestimated. I think it's a fantastic move forward into the 21st century for Surrey County Council. And whilst speaking, Leader, I'd just like to advise you that Sinead Mooney has lost her connection. She's been contacting me on my phone, sending me a text, saying that I'm afraid she's not in the meeting any further to continue with her report. But I think that, just like me, many other members will be delighted to support it in her absence because it is such a great change for the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Well, we'll see if she joins us before we get to recommendations, but we can take those anyway. Denise.
Thank you, Leader. Again, I would like to echo my colleague's sentiments. Things that we take for granted, choice and control and independence in our lives is being extended to our residents who are deserving of their opportunities to have their home for life. And it's fantastic that we are delivering yet again on this bold ambition to deliver our 40 to 50% of provision within five years. So I'm just absolutely delighted to see such fantastic commitment to this. And the fact that it's evidence-based, it's in extensive consultation with families and all of the stakeholders. I absolutely commend this report, so thank you to the team.
Thank you, Denise. Okay, I can't, Sinead's had a power cut, so, okay, well, I think there weren't, I think there were more statements and questions to her. So I think she'd given a full explanation of the report. So in her absence, I'll propose the two, we adopt the two recommendations and I'll read those for you. So the first recommendation is to approve the approach to delivering the published strategic aim of increasing the proportion of working age adults with support needs living in supported independent living settings. And the second recommendation is that we give in principle approval for the sites disclosed in part two of this paper to be used to deliver new supported independent living accommodation. Business cases will be presented to Cabinet to confirm final approval for the development of these sites for independent living. So in Sinead's absence, but on her behalf, can you confirm if you're happy to agree those two recommendations?
Agreed. Very happy, thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, so we will then move on to item 14, which is the Revised Minerals and Waste Development Scheme. And over to Natalie Bramble, thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Members will recall that since the last cabinet meeting, the Surrey Waste Local Plan was approved. I'm pleased to bring forward to this meeting a programme to update the Minerals and Waste Development Scheme. The scheme was last updated in 2011 and is now very out of date. As you're aware, we now intend to produce a joint minerals and waste local plan, which will help to reflect the synergies between the two separate policies. We will therefore be reviewing both the minerals local plan and the Surrey Waste Local Plan to produce the joint plan. The Surrey Waste Local Plan is due to be adopted at full council next month and would not ordinarily have been reviewed so soon. However, it is appropriate to bring forward a review and produce this joint plan. I'm mindful that in reviewing the plan, members did not feel fully engaged in the previous process. And I will therefore ensure that all members, particularly in the divisions potentially affected, are kept fully informed with reporting through the Select Committee, Member Briefings and Cabinet Updates, plus a cross-party member reference group. And there will also be full engagement with our boroughs and districts, with the public as well as an issues and options consultation to come forward in June next year. Once complete, the Surrey Minerals Waste and Local Plan will provide certainty for minerals operators, waste management companies and, more importantly, our local residents.
Thank you, Natalie. I don't see any other hands up. I think this is a follow-on really from the previous reports and this will come back to Cabinet in due course. So thank you very much for that kind of updated clarification. Well, let me just, sorry, let me just see if the recommendation is. Recommendation is we approve the proposed Revised Minerals and Waste Development Scheme, October 2020. I'll take that as agreed unless I see any hands to the contrary.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay, then item 15, Blackwater Valley Hotspots. Matt.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, so this is a key priority for Guildford here. In 2016, Guildford Borough Council secured funding from the Enterprise M3 Economic Partnership to deliver highway improvements to tackle congestion as part of their local plan support. The improvements are proposed for two junctions, the junction with the A31 and A331 and the junction with the A323, A324. Guildford Borough Council progressed both of these schemes to project initiation until July of this year. And in July, Guildford Borough Council asked the County Council to step in and deliver these schemes. This agreement was made on the best-known cost estimates at the time. However, we have done a review and found that there was actually a 3.179 million funding shortfall in that. So what we've been doing is engaging with Guildford Borough Council and the local enterprise partnership, looking at the figures and as well with our own contractor, Kia. So since then, we have had an agreement in principle from Guildford Borough Council to increase the level that they're willing to fund. And we have said that once that's confirmed, we would be happy to cover the rest as the County Council and to deliver this strategically important project which supports the Guildford Local Plan. So Leader, we've phrased the recommendations, as you can see there. We will need to get a final agreement from Guildford Borough Council and the local enterprise partnership. Officers and I are holding regular meetings, as I know you have been with members of Guildford Borough Council in order to deliver this. And I would ask that everyone supports the recommendations so that we can deliver this extremely important strategic improvement which impacts not only the Guildford Borough but Waverley and our neighbours in Hampshire as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, I mean, technically, probably we could go a bit further in recommendation two in that where you said we engage in active conversations, that there are active conversations and hopefully it's completing those conversations. But I don't think we need to change the recommendation unless you're suggesting otherwise. So we'll go to Julie Isles, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Leader, and thank you, Matt. And speaking as a divisional member in the Guildford Borough Council part, I would like to say that the key reason why I welcome Surrey County Council stepping in here is so that our expertise is in play to deliver these schemes. The Guildford Local Plan is very reliant on these and other infrastructure schemes being delivered. And that was made very clear when the plan was taken through at Guildford Borough Council. So I welcome our engagement. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Julie. So I can't see any other hands up. There are the four recommendations as per the paper. And feels as if, sounds as if we will get to a landing on that in the near future, which would be good news. So thank you for that. On that basis, can I assume that those four recommendations are agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. And just to confirm, Sinead is back with us after your power cut. So, and we approved your item in your absence. Okay. Moving on then, item 16, Surrey Schools and Early Years Funding. Back to Julie Isles, thank you.
Yes, thank you. This is a business-as-usual paper in that we're required to consult on and maintain local formula arrangements to allocate the direct school grants to our mainstream schools and our early years providers. The paper takes us through the various elements or blocks of funding which make up that direct school grant, namely schools, the school central services, the high needs or special education needs and disabilities funding and early years. And the indicative funding for 21, 22 is summarised, but the final funding allocations will be published in December so that they take account of pupil number changes between October 19 and October of this year. The Department for Education require formal council approval of the local funding formula. And Schools Forum is a statutory body which must be consulted on the allocation of the direct schools grant. Whilst it's lightly consultative, it does have decision-making powers in specific areas, including the transfer of funding from the schools block. The Department of Education is increasing school funding nationally and we should welcome that. It's the second year of three-year increase in school funding. And minimum per pupil levels are being increased so that it will be £4,180 per primary place and to £5,415 per secondary pupil. I think it's also important that Cabinet note a change in policy from the Department of Education and it no longer allows local authorities to meet overspends on the direct schools grant budgets from the general fund. In Surrey, this affects the high needs block because it has a cumulative and an annual deficit. And this change increases the pressure to reduce the high needs overspend within the direct schools grant. The SEND transformation programme has achieved efficiencies of £8 million in 2021 with the aim of reducing costs while still providing excellent services. We are overdue a national review of funding for that high needs block. And Surrey and other local authorities are having to set aside reserves whilst recovery plans bring those SEND budgets back into balance. So it will be very interesting to see if the Chancellor's announcements tomorrow address this in any of the one-year funding pledges. As I say, it's been a long-term commitment to review those. The DFE is continuing to phase in a national funding formula to replace the individual school funding formula of the 149 different local authorities. And there's a restatement of the intent to move to a hard national funding formula, meaning that there won't be any discretion over formula factors. As in previous years, School Forum have not supported a request to transfer 0.5% of the school's funding block to support pressures in our high needs block. So if we turn to the recommendations on page 259 of the pack, recommendation number one is to lodge an appeal with the Second Secretary of State to overturn that decision. Forum have agreed recommendations two and three, which is to implement the minimum per pupil level in full and the early years funding. It's set out in Annex Four and it reflects hourly funding, SEN inclusion and an increase in the funding for free meals provision. And recommendations four and five seek delegated authority on the SEN funding, following further consultation with schools in November and with Forum in December. So that's to approve the amendments to the funding rates in the formula following receipt of the settlement and the DFE pupil data in December. This is to ensure that total allocations to schools under this formula remain affordable within the council's direct schools grant settlement. So it's a quite mathematical paper, but it sets out our statutory responsibilities. So it's a quite mathematical paper, but it sets out our statutory responsibilities and any delegated decisions when the final data is advanced.
Thanks very much Julie. Yes, two things just before, so Martin Ute has now been able to join the meeting. And then secondly, there's a question form will come in from Mary Lewis.
Thank you Leader. I'm just going to say that I remember agonising over this applying to the Secretary of State for the permission to transfer funds. And it isn't something that any of us like to do. We want to work in partnership with our schools. But when we can't guarantee that we're going to be able to keep within the budget envelope for SEND and when the amounts involved in the high needs block are so huge, I think we have to keep this option open, however uncomfortable it makes us feel. And, and so I do support the Cabinet member in this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you Mary. And as Cabinet, we have raised this with our members of Parliament. This is a national issue, the funding of SEND is not, not just a local issue. The, the numbers of people accessing the service nationwide has increased exponentially. And I do think there's something the government need to look at, you know, the longer term funding for, for SEND. But in the meantime, we're, you know, we'll consider making the application to the Secretary of State at the same time as raising this issue with him and with the Treasury and, and see what happens. As Julie said, there are five recommendations on the paper. Can I take that those who are agreed please?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, item seventeen then is an update on the Waste PFI Contract, which is known as the Eco Park at Shepperton. Many of us have had a number of emails from residents, local residents over the weekend, and thank you very much for those. I'm not going to specifically address the points that has been raised, but I think others will, wherever possible on this call, do that. This paper was simply to, just to, to update residents on where we're at. This has become an extremely protracted contract and facility. The, the, this, this, there is no question that there is frustration on all parts. There are four parties effectively involved in any conversation. That's SUEZ as the, our, the main contractor, their own contractors, ourselves, and then DEFRA who are funding this. And that complicates things where you have all four organisations with a view. Having said that, I think we've now got to the point where we, we need to have clear legal advice on what our remedies are and what we can do to bring this contract to a, to a conclusion, one way or the other. And that is what we have done. We have commissioned a review and we have had legal advice on, on our options. And, and those are being shared with SUEZ. There are conversations with SUEZ on a, on a daily, very regular basis around issues arising from this contract. But I think we're now, we're now clear on what, what those options look like. I'm afraid there are, there is a commercial sensitivity about those at the moment and those will be explored in, in part two of this agenda, which I'm afraid is not open to, to the public. And all I can say is that we all want to, to see this resolved and we will now push forward as quickly and as firmly as we possibly can to achieve that. I, I don't know if there are some others. I think Natalie Bramall, are you going to pick up some of the specific points that residents have raised?
Yes, thank you Leader. I have responded to all the residents that have contacted me already earlier on today. And as you've already alluded to, the County Council are obviously very concerned about the delay. And, and as you've said, we're addressing this at the highest level with SUEZ. To confirm, the Eco Park will only move into operation and be accepted by this council if and when it passes a thorough series of tests to prove its operation is both safe and reliable. Although for reasons of commercial confidentiality, we're limited in what we can share in respect to this work. We're doing, and what we're doing to manage the contract. I can assure members and our communities and residents, the officers and all Cabinet members are working really hard to protect the interests of the council and, and critically, our taxpayers' value for money in the delivery of this contract and the associated construction programme. The, the leader's already covered the part two of the report, which, which is, is very difficult to talk about. But I want to, to take this time to recognise the issues that have been raised by residents. In regard to the current operation, we've received a large number of messages from local residents setting out their concerns over a number of aspects of the Eco Park, including strong odours and emergency noise and the traffic generated by the construction. And I'm really sympathetic to residents that have raised these issues. And I'm grateful that you've come forward with your concerns. And I want to provide some reassurance that emissions from the stack are continually monitored and SUEZ are required to comply with strict emissions that are set out in their environmental permit. The operation of the plant under the terms of the environmental permit is regulated by the Environmental Agency and to ensure that it does not cause any harm to the environment or to human health. If the emissions monitoring identifies any concerns, the Environment Agency can and will close the site down. To this end, we are actively pushing for SUEZ to engage with the Environment Agency on the back of these complaints and we've been, that we've been made aware of. And we remain grateful to residents in the surrounding area for advising us of the issues experienced. We obviously will continue to work with residents in the area to support a resolution of their concerns. And we would encourage all residents writing to us to ensure that they're also making their complaints directly to SUEZ as it is SUEZ that are required to investigate all complaints of pollution and report the outcome to the Environment Agency. In addition, residents can report these directly to the Environment Agency, which again will help ensure that all these matters are investigated and resolved as soon as possible. We've also been made aware of noise issues and the traffic complaints specifically related the construction of the plant and we will be investigating in our role as a relevant planning authority. I can assure residents and members that we are proactively working to ensure that the relevant authority is taking the steps required to address the issues raised in the operation of this Eco Park. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie. Sinead?
Thank you Leader and thank you for persevering with my IT issues. I have also received the numerous correspondence from local residents and I'm very grateful for being given the opportunity to talk on this paper today. The contacts we've had, as councillor Bramall has said, have been about a range of issues, including noise, loud alarms at antisocial hours, antisocial hours. And of course, we're all taking this very, very seriously. And whilst we do accept aspects of the site are not working and that high-level discussions are ongoing, we remain very concerned about the local impact. So as an elected member for Spelthorn, and I know my Spelthorn Cabinet colleagues will join me, I recognise the impact the issue at the Eco Park has on residents. And in agreement with the leader and Cabinet member, and I'm very grateful for that, and with the support of my Spelthorn Cabinet colleagues, I would like to engage with the local residents, in particular the Residents' Association, SATAP, and those who have written to us by offering a proposal to set up a working group. And we will reach out to these groups and residents in the next few days to ensure this happens and happens quickly. Thank you Leader.
Thank you. Thank you Sinead. I think that will be very helpful. I think it's, it's, you know, the, I'm afraid that the, many of these issues are outside of the control of the County Council. They are down to SUEZ. That doesn't mean in any sense that we're going to walk away from or ignore them. You know, our role here now is to push forward in the conversations with SUEZ, you know, and, and to, to, to follow the, or to choose one of the options that we have, that have been set out by our legal advisers. And that, that we will, we definitely will be doing. So thank you for picking up the specific residents' issues and to Natalie. And no doubt we'll, 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 we'll hear more about those in due course. Is there anybody else wishes to raise anything on this item? There is just one recommendation, which is we note the contents of the report and that a review of the current Waste PFI contract has been undertaken. And in, in part two, in the non-public part of this agenda, we will be taking forward at least one of those options. So can I take it that that recommendation is agreed please?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. So the last item on the public agenda is item eighteen, which is an update on our current financial position from Mel Few. Thank you Mel.
Thank you Leader. This report covers the halfway stage of the financial year. And at the halfway stage, there have been further progress to closing the budget gap, which we reported on last month, by about 1.2 million, leaving 3.5 million gap to close by the end of the financial year. It should be noted that continued pressure in children's services, where the projected overspend for the year is 11.2 million, continues to increase, which is mainly due to the rising costs from the high needs block, which is projected to account for 68% or 7.6 million of the service's unfavourable forecast, with the remaining over projection attributed mainly to the higher volume of looked-after children, much of which has arisen during the COVID pandemic impact on the service. The rising waste costs continue to impact the results of the environment, transport and infrastructure services and is currently under investigation to see how we can reduce that gap. As advised in previous meetings, the budgets have been reset in taking into account the 52.5 million receipt of COVID expenses and these are now set out in Table Two, where the budget has been increased from 969.1 million to 1.6 million or 1.0 billion. First time I've ever said billion in county monthly report. The impact of COVID-19 on the year's results is set out in paragraph three through paragraph eight in the report. And in summary, the situation is that the total cost of COVID-19 to the council is 78 million pounds, of which the council has received the following receipts: general refund of additional expenditure and lost income of 52.5 and specific funding for test and trace infection control etcetera of 25.5. As the leader mentioned earlier, not all the funding has been received, but it is expected shortly. The Public Health Grant was increased in the year by 2.4 million, of which 0.8 was utilised to fund the NHS Agenda for Change pay award. The Cabinet is asked to approve the balance of 1.6 be transferred to the Public Health Budget for use in areas such as mental health, suicide prevention as part of Surrey's health and wellbeing priorities. The capital expenditure position reflects additional expenditures being allocated to highways of 1.6 million for the delay in two specific projects offset by lower forecasts in other areas. The details are again set out in paragraph fifteen and sixteen of the report. The Cabinet is asked to approve an empty property proposal. The details are set out in Annex Three of the report. This is an innovative concept, approved, which approved will encourage district and borough authorities to reduce the number of empty properties within their areas. Where individual boroughs change the empty homes' county tax policy on evidence of such, the county will refund the additional county tax on those properties collected to the borough as an incentive to reduce the number of empty properties. At each quarter, the Cabinet is presented with certain pertinent data on the debt due to the council, the Treasury update and returns on invested surplus cash over the last quarter. On the debt side, the Cabinet will note that the debt due to council at the end of September amounted to 52 million, of which adult social care accounts for 55.4% or 29 million. A new item of 12.3 million, I should say, has arisen, which represents a claim for refund of expenses incurred by the council, which directly related to COVID and will be reclaimed from health in due course. Turning to the four recommendations, the council should note the forecast of revenue and expenditure budget for the year. It should approve the reset of the budget from incorporating the COVID to the additional envelopes and approve the allocation of 1.6 million health service investment into the budget and approve the carryforward for the remainder of the 1.6 allocated to the public health service. And finally, approve the empty property proposals as contained in the paper. Thank you.
Thank you Mel. Any, any comments from anybody on that? It's all, all very self-explanatory and generally moving in the right direction, which is, which is positive. Okay, no, in the absence of any comments then, as Mel says, there are five recommendations. Perhaps if you could just all confirm those who are agreed?
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay, thank you very much. So that, that brings us to the end of the public agenda. Thank you for, to anybody that was watching. I hope you'll see that there are lots of positive things that are happening, lots of activity, you know, despite COVID-19. I hope that by the next time we meet as a Cabinet, you know, we will, you know, we will have moved on. We'll see what, what further restrictions, if any, are imposed on Surrey. But we'll continue to do whatever we can to protect our residents and indeed the businesses across the county. But I think we should all feel a little bit more optimistic that actually the light is at the end of the tunnel for this pandemic. I certainly hope so. I'm sure we all do. So thank you very much and no doubt look forward to catching up in due course.